I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for April 22, 2025 to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda from administration?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think we have one addition under eight point two. We'll talk about the road on 54th Avenue.
Thank you. Anything from council? I'll look for a motion from council to accept the amendments to the agenda.
Make that motion, your worship.
Counselor Butcher, thank you. And I'll call that question all in favor. And that's carried, and I'll look for a motion to accept the amended agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Cosby. And I'll call that question all in favor. And that's carried as well. One second. All of a sudden, my computer decided I needed to log back in. Okay. We have the proclamation for the Administration Professionals Day. And whereas Administrative Professionals Day is nationally recognized on the last Wednesday of the month of April, providing a significant occasion to acknowledge and commend the invaluable contributions of administrative professionals; and whereas Administrative Professionals Day serves as an opportunity to recognize and honor the hard work, contributions, and achievements of administrative professionals across all industries and sectors; and whereas this attention to, sorry, their attention to detail, organizational skills, and dedication ensure the smooth functioning of workplaces and facilitate the achievement of organizational goals; and whereas we recognize development officers, sorry, we recognize administrative professionals and their commitment to public service; and therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Dave McCray, on behalf of the Town Council of Redwater, do hereby proclaim April 24, 2024, as Administrative Professionals Day, I encourage all individuals, businesses, and organizations to join in honoring and celebrating the hard work, dedication, and achievements of administrative professionals. Go ahead, Counselor Olson.
You want to edit that there, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
It's April 24, 2025.
Thank you for that. It's wrong in two places, so given April 24, 2025 is Administrative Professionals Day. Thank you for that.
I didn't even notice it till now. I didn't even notice it till now.
I read it three times at home, so I could practice it and never noticed it, so. So item number four, Public Input.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just want to bring to council attention what we've done with the agenda. If you look under Public Input, and this will be in every agenda package, it just gives our procedure for our public input session for the public, so if they are looking at our, excuse me, at our agenda, they'll know the process and how they can get on, so it's another, it's another way of letting the public know about our public input process.
Okay, so this isn't up for discussion reading tonight?
No, it's, it'll be in every agenda, just like this, so that it's...
Given it's the first time round, it might be a good time to solicit anything from council to see if there's anything that caused any heartburn. Anything that council noticed on it? I read through it, I thought it was well put together, and certainly outlines the process for sure.
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you for that, Mr. Van Buehl. No delegations or presentations tonight? Any unfinished business from administration?
None from administration, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. New business, eight point one, RFD on tax rate options. Ms. Tingley, we are in your hands.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the purpose of this RFD is to receive some direction from council as to what rates to include in the tax rate bylaw that will be brought to council during the regular council meeting on May 6. Before I review the proposed motions, I'll circle back to those. The background covers how we arrived at this RFD, starting in, I guess, first quarter of last year, I guess really, 2006, with the annexed properties. I've also included, for your reference, the options that we discussed at the last council meeting, and I'm going to skip right forward to the discussion. Okay, so just a reminder on our budget opportunities and challenges. So again, we had some external and internal pressures and opportunities, for reference here. So we're going to start with requisitions. So last Tuesday, there were some questions regarding the requisitions and the changes year over year, so I wanted to do a little bit of a deeper dive this year into what the requisitions are and how we arrive at the numbers. Well, not by we, I mean as numbers that are provided to us as an organization. So you'll notice the school requisition, there's no change from '24 to '25, which is really great news. We did see a decrease in the seniors requisition from $28,191 to $27,789 in '25, and again, a decrease in the DI properties from $3,000 to $2,700 in 2025. So a bit more information on the Alberta School Affairs Fund. So every year, the province calculates, based on the assessed value, the amount each municipality must contribute towards the public education system. So each taxpayer's portion of the education property tax payment is based on the assessment value of their property and the local education property tax rate. So Municipal Affairs establishes the provincial mill rate used to determine each municipality's share of the property education tax. So note that education property taxes were frozen in '24 and '25, as we saw on the previous slide. They will increase to $2.72 per thousand of equalized assessment for residential farmland properties, and $4 per thousand of equalized assessment for non-residential properties for '25, '26. So something to be mindful of, will have no budget impacts, but it will impact our taxpayers in the coming years. So compared to the current mill rates below, for reference, of $2.56 and $3.76. So for cash flow purposes, we pay this in four installments throughout the year, so March, June, September, and December, even though we don't, we don't set out the property tax notices until around the third week of May, and those aren't due until the end of June, so it's something that we have to be cognizant of as administration, just to manage our cash flows. I'm talking really fast, or you want to circle back, please let me know. So I did ask for some additional information on how the rates are set for homeland housing. I didn't get a specific answer back, so I'm hoping that I might have some more information for you on May 6, just for additional context. Again, we don't have any control over this, it's just to kind of give you and the taxpayers some more information as to what they see on their property tax bill. So designated industrial, so the DI property uniform tax rate is determined by total cost incurred by the assessment services branch to prepare the assessment, divided by the total provincial DI property assessment. So this includes linear property. So for 2025, the DI property uniform tax rate is 0.0701 per thousand of DI property assessment. So this is applied as a separate line item to each DI property owner's tax notice by each municipality. So they'll see that's a separate line item in the same way that they see the, the school tax, homeland housing, and if it's applicable, the DI rate.
Excuse me. Head Counselor Olson. What they're saying, or what they're saying, or whoever, is we're paying the assessment board to assess our industrial property?
So we, we are not. This is a cost that it flows through. So we act as an intermediary. We collect the tax based on the number that we have provided, so it goes on the property tax notices of the applicable properties, and then we remit that exact same balance, so it flows through on our end. So we're not covering any costs, we're just facilitating that transfer of funds.
Okay, but in actual fact, it's still, the industry then is paying to have their property assessed by the province.
Correct.
And from what you're, you're saying, that whole process, as in the school requisition and the seniors requisition, we're the conduit that allows for that, those funds to flow?
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's correct. I just wanted to provide a comprehensive overview of what residents can expect to see on their property tax notice in a few months, and so the portion that we control, obviously, is just the municipal tax rate, which we're going to dive into now, but it's questions that we get every year, and I know it's a question that Counselor Melnick brought up last Tuesday, too, so I wanted to kind of give additional context, too, so you could kind of see the whole picture. As, we don't have control over these numbers, but it's just something to be cognizant of as it does impact our taxpayers.
Yeah, it just, I'm just trying to get a clear minute, because I mean, they took that assessment away from us. Now they're charging us to have it done. And what I understand, like, some of the linear and that, we're not even getting the money for. If I'm not mistaken, is it, or linear, or some of the ONMs changed or something?
Well, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so this change happened many years ago, and I'm a bit fuzzy on the details, so it's not that they've started this year.
No, I know it's been going on for a few years.
Yeah, it's been going on, you know, basically since they made the change to move all linear property to a uniform assessment across the province, and, and the impetus for it was, there was properties who felt like, how would I say this? There was companies that felt like how things were being assessed in different areas of the province were different.
They'd see it.
So they had different installations in different areas, and they're going, how can this be being assessed at something, when something else is being assessed at something else, in a, in a different municipality? So that was the impetus for the province to say, we need to make, be, be uniform. But of course, there's a cost to doing that, that portion of, and so they decided to put that on the linear assessment.
And they downed the administration of it to municipalities, and then returned, doing the provincial work.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Van Buehl, we heard at Alberta Munis, there was currently a committee that's been struck by the province to review this whole process with industry leaders and what have you, to try and revamp it even further, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so if we think back to, I believe it was about September, October of 2000, I want to say 20?
Twenty-one.
Year 21, one of those years. The Minister of Municipal Affairs at the time, I believe, was Madu, Kizi Madu. They brought forward a proposal to change the designated industrial property formula, I guess is the best way to put it, across the province, and it was wide and loud backlash from specifically rural municipalities in Alberta, because it wasn't to gain more money. Certainly, there was municipalities who, and I worked for one of them at the time, who had, that this change is going to cost our taxpayers a significant amount of dollars, right? Because it's, it's a loss of revenue that...
It's going to be made up somewhere.
It's easy to say, well, you'll, you'll cut this, or you'll cut that. In the case of the municipality I was working for, it was going to cost us about two and a half million dollars a year, which, again, is a significant, and we weren't the highest on the list, I remember that. There was municipalities, if you remember, there was mayors and counselors on the steps of the legislature saying, you can't do this, and they did back off, you know, in all fairness to the province, they went, okay, hang on, maybe we were a little hasty. And there was a commitment at that time that it's not dead, it's going to come back, and now the new, the new PC government is, as, as you've said, Mr. Mayor, they've said, we have to look at this, because there are certainly some industry who doesn't, is not real happy about the...
And without wanting to hijack what we're talking about, but to build on what Counselor Olson was saying, where are we in our linear collection?
Um, so I don't have that information offhand, but I can prepare some information for council.
Better in the middle.
Nothing, that I, I can't think of any linear properties that are in arrears to the point where we have flagged them.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, really nothing you can do with them.
Well, I'm going to go back a couple of years, I know we had at the counter, a requirement to lose some revenue, write it off, and so I was just concerned that we were headed back down that trail, because it did come back up again at Alberta Munis about the loss of revenue for, some of the major counties are looking at multiple millions of dollars, and have been for years, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, unpaid taxes by designated industrial properties is still an issue in the, in the province, and the, and the provincial government has acknowledged it. They did have a program where, because the issue for municipalities is, when those properties don't pay their taxes, they're also not paying their education portion, which now becomes an absolute cash out-of-pocket expense for the municipality, even though they haven't collected the revenue. And there was a program where the province helped those municipalities who were in that, so you could get the education portion granted back from the province, and then they would worry about it. Again, I think the short answer to our question about our position, there was nothing flagged in our, in our audit, financial statements about uncollected debt, so I think that should be, that's, you know, that's the first key that, I won't say there's none, but it's not at a point where it's being flagged in our audit and financial statements.
But I can absolutely compile some specifics for this council meeting, so you can have some definitive answers. But I, I appreciate the questions regarding the DI, too. It's, I like this open dialogue, because then I can get some more context as to what happened before, you know, that predates me in the municipal world, so. There's some other questions regarding the requisitions, I'll move on to the exciting part that we've been involved, with the mill rates. Sorry, I'm trying to make tax exciting. Nope, sorry, I lied. Okay, so before we dive into that, I just wanted to, again, I took this from Tanmar Consulting's assessment presentation, because it does have an impact in what happens to rates compared to 2024, which is really interesting. So because we saw the significant increase in residential compared to the decrease in commercial light industrial, it does impact the mill rates when we do our calculations on the next slide, so this is just a, a reminder of what's that looks like, and then we'll dive into the options. So this is where I'm going to rely heavily on the notes that I prepared, because I don't want to miss any of the points that we've laid out. So option one is the option where mill rates are calculated based on previous years. So this is using 63% of residential and 37% of non-residential, and due to the significant changes in the assessment compared to previous years, this yields the following mill rates. So we have the residential at 9.9543. I've attached the previous year's bylaw for reference, so the tax rate for residential was 10.1615. So with the same composition, because of the changes in assessment, we actually saw a decrease in the mill rate for these residential properties. Now that does not, as you see, it does not translate into a decrease in the monthly cost as the assessments did go up overall, but it was interesting to see that we did see a decrease in that mill rate. And then we'll go through like non-res at 12.66, you'll see vacant res and vacant non-res, and then the comparatives will be in the bylaw. So again, option one, calculated exact same as last year, no changes at this time. So for options two through four, we will compare, so we'll have the actual rates, the actual mill rates if those options are to be chosen, but any variances, and they'll be summarized at the end, any variances relate to how they compare to option one. Please stop me at any time if I've lost you, I'm going to try and not get too in the weeds. So option two, we, I found a number to result, to yield a 90% reduction in the mill rate. So previously, we had, we had one residential subclass, and farmland was, farmland had the same mill rate as the residential mill rate. So what I've done is I've broken them out, so now we have an additional subclass of the annexed residential, and then a subclass for farmland, sorry, a subclass for farmland. Farmland had a different mill rate from the residential mill rate, and the mill rate is approximately 90% of the residential mill rate. So everything else has remained the same, but those are the changes, the 90% reduction. So with this 90% reduction, the previously annexed farmland assessments see an average reduction in municipal property taxation of $330 annually. So this compares to the rates in option one. So the impact on farmland assessments outside of the previously annexed area only see a reduction of $10 annually compared to option one. So this is just due to the reduced assessment value of the properties in this area. So the highest dollar amount in terms of farmland existed in that previously annexed area, so that's why in terms of the farmland within the, outside of the annexed property, they're only seeing a 10% reduction, where externally, the annexed properties are 332 reduction annually, and again, compared to option one. So as for the proposed new previously annexed residential subclass, this 90% reduction yields an average annual reduction of 331 per property. And due to the large assessment base in the residential subclass, the impact on the average residential property at the assessed value of 225,200 was an annual increase of $5. So with this, with farmland at 90%, a new subclass of this annexed residential, both at 90% of the residential mill rate, we see a reduction of $332 annually for the farmland, 331 for the residential properties in the previously annexed area, and then subsequently an increase of $5 for the residential class as a result of this. for the residential class as a result of this. This is where I think sometimes a whiteboard can be really nice in here, too. So option three, everything is the same, but instead of ninety percent, we've reduced it to seventy-five percent. So for the farmland and the annexed residential, the mill rate that we're proposing in this option is seventy-five percent of the residential rate. So you'll notice that there are slight changes, because we have to, again, we're looking at this in terms of a pie, so there's gonna be slight deviations, but that amount for the farmland and the annexed residential represents the seventy-five percent of the total. So within, like, there's a very, very small, like, it's seventy-five point something, something, because we can't, we can't quite speak it exacts here. So this is where we start seeing significant variances in terms of the farmland and the annexed residential, but because of the size of the residential subclass, still not seeing significant changes there. So for the farmland assessments, and again, compared to option one, we're seeing an average reduction of eight hundred and thirty-one dollars annually. So that's for the farmland outside, like, within the annexed area. And so the farmland that wasn't part of the annexed area, it's only a twenty-six dollar reduction. So the annexed residential properties see an average annual reduction of eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The impact on the residential properties as a result of this, thirteen dollars annually, based on the average assessment of two hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred. Okay, so option four. So now we've gone from seventy-five percent to sixty percent. So again, the farmland and the annexed residential at the bottom, the mill rates are sixty percent of the residential rate. So this yields a annual impact on the farmland of thirteen hundred and twenty-nine dollars annually compared to option one. And again, that's the annexed farmland. The farmland not within the annexed area sees an impact of a reduction of fifty dollars. The impact on the previously annexed residential properties is an average annual reduction of thirteen hundred and twenty-three dollars. So the impact on the residential assessment is an increase of twenty-one dollars annually. And so I've summarized the options in the summary with option two, three, and four, again, compared to option one. So you'll see the mill rate reduction, the ninety percent, seventy-five percent, and sixty percent. And as I'm reading this, it would have been probably so helpful for me to have it behind it as well, so I apologize for that. You'll see the reduction in farmland. Again, that's farmland not within the previously annexed area, that's farmland that has always been our farmland, it wasn't previously within the surgeon rates. We have the previously annexed farmland, so the reduction there of the three thirty-two, eight thirty-one, thirteen twenty-nine. The proposed new annexed residential area of three thirty-one, eight twenty-seven, and thirteen twenty-three. And then how this impacts the residential properties at an average of two hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred, so an increase of five, thirteen, and twenty-one dollars. Again, these are all annually.
Go ahead, Councilor Olson. I'm confused. You say option four is twenty-one dollar increase to us, but your slide up there is showing ninety-eight dollars.
Yeah, okay. I was hoping you'd ask this, because this is, okay, so, this is a test. Okay, so why this is, is because how this calculates is if this was just the rate. So if we go back to option, so remember ninety-eight dollars. So ninety-eight less twenty-one. So it's the option one, seventy-seven. So seventy-seven.
So twenty-one makes that.
Seventy-seven plus, plus five.
As an aggregate, as you move forward.
Yeah. So, yeah, so the information I'm giving you in the RFD is compared to option one. This is if you were to select option one through four, just the impact overall compared to the previous year. Because it wasn't enough numbers, I had to hit you with more for a bit more. I really struggled with how to present this in a way that I was providing all of the information for you to make an informed decision without it convoluted.
Nothing about mill rates is convoluted.
Well, I thought maybe color coding would help. He doesn't love color coding.
If I, I couldn't...
Go ahead, Mr. Van Buehl.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think, again, I'll do an introduction kind of similar to what I did at the regular council meeting last week, and that is, this kind of shows the numbers around philosophical discussion about, do we want to have that subclass that says there is this annexed area still, or we wanna call, we, and again, probably not my first choice for terminology, but our hands are a bit tied this year. We would have to, we have to do some things with our assessment role in order to name it something else, which we certainly could do in the future, but I think for the purpose of this discussion, annexed versus, you know, the existing is probably easier to keep in people's heads about what we're talking about. But again, I still think it comes down to a philosophical, is there, is there a case or is there an argument, or is there rationale, however you wanna, whatever terminology you wanna use, for some type of reduction in that mill rate for those areas that, my preference would be calling them unserviced. And not that there's not roads there, but they're not serviced by water, they're not serviced by sewer, those, like, there's decreased level of service for the majority of those properties.
And for additional context as well, the, so the properties impacted by the reductions above, in options two through four, they represent approximately three percent of the total taxable assessments. This is why the net impact between the classes and subclasses vary so differently or significantly. So option two provides a small benefit to the impacted properties compared to the work required to prepare new bylaw to add the proposed residential subclass. So it would call the question the practicality of this option, whereas options three and four provide a more equitable approach to the determination of mill rates for the twenty-five taxation year compared to options one and two.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Just so, just to make sure, so option one, if we went with the proposed motion, that means everything stays the same, right?
Absolutely, yes, same calculations.
Okay, and then I understand two, three, and four, and then, just so, I think I asked Mr. Van Buehl last week or whatever, just so I'm clear, though, when they, when they signed this, they knew, they knew, like, in seventeen years or whatever it was, this is what it, well, they didn't know the exact rate, but they knew it was gonna, you know, and it's, and I guess to piggyback off that, then, if we do change something, it's gonna affect all our other ratepayers in town, right? Like you said, the five bucks, or thirteen, or twenty-one more on their tax, right?
But annually.
Annual, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So when you spread that out over nine hundred and ninety houses compared to ten? Or, you know, whatever the annexed properties are, you know, it, to me, it sounds a lot worse, but when you're saying five bucks, but five bucks times nine hundred and ninety or whatever, you know, residents we have down. Councilor Spicer.
Okay, just for clarification on, you have farmland, and then you have previously annexed farmland. Why are they at two different?
So that was just to compare how it impacted the farmland that wasn't within the annexed area compared to the farmland within the annexed area, because the farmland outside, within the annexed area, it represents a large dollar amount compared to the farmland internally. So I just wanted to be transparent about the fact that if we were proceeding with a different mill rate for the farmland property, it was going to include all farmland and not just the previously annexed, and how it was gonna impact them.
So this goes back to our discussion about how many subclasses we can have in each of the tax classifications. Zero ability to do a subclass for farmland. But that being said, we can change our mill rate for farmland, but we cannot change our mill rate for a subclass of farmland, because the MGA doesn't allow that. So if you change the mill rate for the farmland, it changes the mill rate for farmland all through the, all through the municipality.
Anything else through to Ms. Tingley?
Quick question, there's...
Go ahead. Know where it is for farmland in Sturgeon County this year, for twenty twenty-five?
So I thought of this as I was sitting here. Van Buehl told me, make sure you have that bylaw, and I, I apologize, I do not.
They may not have passed, we've waited right till the end of April before for them to pass, so.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, I think last year we had it right around, like, between the cow and, and when we were passing the bylaw, too.
We've had to wait, it would be the first one, we've had to wait years, or not years, but over the years, we've had to wait to pass our mill rates and taxation bylaw, waiting for them to do their bylaw.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment, so, although it has some relevancy to it, and I, and I'll say some, I won't say it's totally irrelevant, but, and it does have some relevancy to it, but, and this is gonna be my advice to council, there's gonna be a time where we have to put this to bed, right? And whether that's this year or next year, or whenever, like, I think there's, you know, there's always gonna be this argument, and we heard it last year, I've heard it in the subsequent months, between this discussion in two thousand and twenty-four and this discussion today, about we were promised this by a letter and when the annexation proposal was brought forward to the municipal government board at the time. Unfortunately, what we, what we put in our annexation proposal was not accepted by the municipal government board at the time. They were very clear in their letter back to us at the time that they don't do indefinite transitions for tax rates, they do them for a specific period of time. And in that letter, and I don't have it sitting in front of me, so I believe they said the maximum they go is fifteen years.
She went seventeen.
Which doesn't make sense when they went seventeen years, but, again, I believe in the letter, they said, you know, the maximum they normally go is fifteen years. So there's always gonna be that argument, and that rationale from people who are in this, you know, area, we'll call it the annexed area, there's always gonna be that argument. However, as we've outlined, I think, and I'm biased, but Ms. Tingley laid it out, I laid it out last year, there are certain rules that we cannot alter, and we just cannot have a subclass of farmland. We can have a subclass of residential properties, and those are unlimited, but in the, for commercial properties, you're limited to, like, two subclasses. So from that perspective, our hands are tied, and which is why last, last week and today, these are, these are really the options. I mean, we can put a fifth option in there if you, if you want us to, you know, to go back on the residential side and go, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna mimic that, you know, that tax rate, we can certainly do that. But as you can see from the presentation, those dollars get incrementally bigger for the rest of our ratepayers, which is why when Allegra and I talked about it, recommendation here is three or four. Two, it's just, it's, quite frankly, it's throwing a drop in the ocean and trying to tell people you've made a difference. It's not really impacting, quite frankly, anybody in a significant way, and it really becomes an administrative exercise that doesn't really accomplish anything. If you go into three or four, now the dollars start to make some sense, start to be impactful, especially for those residents who are in the, in the annexed area, excuse me, without being a real hardship on, on, you know, on anybody else in the other area. And that's why we've put together those, we didn't bring a, we didn't bring a fifth option, we could have kind of done some numbers and went to, you know, a tax rate at fifty percent or whatever, but, again, I think the options right now show that incremental numbers start to, start to climb relatively, relatively rapidly, and those are the two options that I think council has to have that debate philosophically.
Councilor Olson.
I'm trying to remember what we did for them last year. I know we did something, but I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, we, we allowed them to, we allowed them to have, we gave them a penalty-free option up until December thirty-first, so they could spread out their, their tax payments without penalty from basically July first to December thirty-first.
But there was no forgiveness in taxes.
It was...
The feedback I received regarding that option wasn't, their chief complaint wasn't their capacity to pay, it was the, whether or not the rate that they were receiving was equitable. So that's why we came up with a different approach to address their concerns to present to you for this year.
I don't know if you can answer this one at all, but what's it, what's the value of having water and sewer and gas? Well, we gave them gas anyway, it's water and sewer. Water eventually, we could give it to them, maybe, but what, you had a piece of property, what's the value of that? Is it the twenty-five percent? Is it feel forty, or is that just? Maybe Garda can answer that one. I see Allegra.
A lot of dollars worth of money.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think, you know, in all fairness, it's probably a, an answer that can be, best be given by our assessor. We know that we have some, you know, a couple properties on the commercial end that don't have full servicing, how that affects them, again, you would have to have that hypothetical for our assessor to say, if this were serviced, what can you look at? And again, the part of the servicing that, I think we, the discussion we wanna stay out of is how much does that cost to service? Because, you know, as, as you've seen, you know, in the work that we've done in the last month, you know, putting together redoing servicing for some of the properties in the community, you know, to get our capacities up, we're talking about, you know, just for sewer line, we're talking about two thousand dollars a meter, that's, you know...
Was fifteen hundred linear.
And water is fifteen hundred, so you're talking about thirty, you know, if you're gonna do both, you're talking, you know, somewhere between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars a meter. So, I mean, we, we could all, we could all, you know, go on a map and go, hmm, that's that far, that, so, so the cost of this, again, I, I'm probably getting into too far right now, but it is cost prohibitive for anybody to service that without developing large tracts of land, because that's how, that's how you pay for that, right? Because if we had a line put in there, we would make sure that it's oversized so that the next person comes in, doesn't have to build another line, right, that they can tie in, and then there's all the rest of that. So whether we do it, whether those individual property owners do it, the bottom line is it's cost prohibitive. It just isn't gonna happen until there's a large tract development in those areas.
Ms. Tingley, you mentioned the word equity, equitable for everybody involved, and when you take, you know, like, going back seventeen, eighteen years ago, there was, what, six upgraders in, plus Northwest were all coming here, we were anticipating thirty thousand people, we were looking at, at everything that was gold and everything else, and we saw that none of that developed. We, we ended up with some from Northwest Redwater, and that was great. But we saw in our MDP that some of that land probably isn't gonna get developed for a long, long period of time, it's gonna... It's going to be cultivated farmland for considerable period of time, especially in our current, uh, growth rates. But how does that impact what's fair and what's equitable for all of the residents? And that's the hard part. That's what you gotta look at, you know, what, what makes sense for everybody. I guess going back to comment when Water Commission was here, what's, what's good? All for one and one for all, that if we try and progress and make our community better by working together, or is there something else that we're missing and we're not working? I don't know what that answer is, I really don't. Yeah.
On the council direct administration to prepare the tax rate bylaw with the mill rate based on no changes to the current subclasses as presented in option one.
Discussion.
I need some time to think.
I'm sort of in the air of, we can even do that here. Essentially, we are talking money.
We are and
I'm gonna give Dwayne a week to think.
We're kind of directing, uh, administration not to change something that is going to cost us money, so I don't know. What's your feelings on that? I, I asked myself the same question, I answered it the other way. Yeah, sounds okay.
So my argument would be, you're asking, you're asking, you're not making the decision, you're asking administration to prepare a bylaw that says X. The decision would actually be made. The decision would actually be made at the, um, May 6th.
Right. Which is why.
Two weeks.
Which is why I came up with the opposite answer to what you just did.
So, so Mr. Mayor, what I would say is if you pass that motion and big F, like if you pass that motion, you're not tied into that.
No.
Base stakes, right? We could have in our back pocket what bylaw B or C might look like, right?
Go ahead.
I'd just make a comment to why I made the motion. I would, I would just, I just have a hard time putting the burden onto the ratepayers that had no, nothing to do with anything that, you know, came about. They made the decision 17 years ago and they signed off on it, so I just have a hard time putting it back on, you know, the ratepayers when it was all decided a while ago and.
Any other discussion with regards to, go ahead, Councilor Butcher.
Well, I've read this over and over and over again. And I think we have to meet in the middle at some point. We just can't, like they don't have their, their water and their, their sewer and yes, they signed off on it, but you know, I, I've read it over and over and over and then this is going to be one of the toughest decisions we make.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment. I think we need to be careful and I apologize, Councilor Butcher, if I, if I've taken your comment out of context, but they didn't actually sign off on anything. You know, the town at the time presented a proposal, that proposal included guarantee, I guess is the best way that I could put it. The municipal government board changed those parameters. So nobody, nobody really signed off on anything other than the municipal government board. And then we got the order in council that said, this is how, this is how this should work. So I, I want to be careful of that language about people signing off on something. They were consulted, absolutely, right? But nobody signed off on anything other than the municipal government board and the minister at the time who then brought an order in council to the province, so. And I apologize if I took your comments out of, out of context.
No, I, I appreciate it.
And that gets to the point where I struggle with this is that there was this, lack of a better word, a promise. And I know like for me, my word is my word and that's where I have a struggle with, because we as council, we have to represent some of those decisions that weren't our decisions. And that's where I struggle with this in the end, but I also have a very hard time shuffling this. Like again, we're all, you some men made that comment, we're all in this together. So, and then you're, we're gonna go and say, well, we're gonna give you a break and we're gonna shuffle that on to somebody else. I, I struggle with that.
What I struggle with too.
Go ahead. I can't remember seeing any evidence last year even of a, a deal or, you know, be it verbal or anything, it's like, I can't remember seeing anything stating that they were gonna continue on with all this tax differences and everything over the years. We had quite a bit of information last year when this was all brought up to us.
So.
Who was that letter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, there was a letter in the consultation process where the town said, we, you know, the proposal as it's going, and, and again, the proposal as it's going forward will ask for this, right? And this being no, no tax rate increase to the residents until development happens.
That was taken as a promise and that's again, was it a promise?
Here's what I would say, you know, hindsight, and this is hindsight 2020. However, that was worded, probably didn't have the ability to fulfill that promise because it, it's a proposal, again, it's a proposal that goes to the municipal and now it's the property rights tribunal board or whatever, but at the time it was, you know, labeled as the municipal government board. You put a proposal in and then they do with it what they may after that, so. But that's hindsight and that's, you know, that is absolutely looking in the rearview mirror with 2020 vision, right? And maybe a lesson.
Ray, Councilor. I just got a question for you. So then the, whatever way we go, if we do go the way to lower it for them and then we do put this on to the ratepayers and then they get angry and they come after us for something, could they not do a petition to say, well, no, we don't want to take this on, we had nothing to do with? I'm, I'm just curious if they could come with something saying, well, we don't want to take this on either. As we're kind of throwing it at them.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, I guess any rate pair or group of rate pairs can petition council and petition them in a formal way or petition, petition them in an informal way and say, hey, we don't like this decision. That is, that is the ability of every resident or every, any group of residents.
We have a ballot box this year too.
And but as far as a formal petition, unless there was, and again, I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and this, this limb might not be very sturdy, but the options for a group of residents who didn't like it, you would have to challenge the bylaw in some way that it was, the bylaw was formed. It is absolutely allowed in the municipal govern, in the MGA to create a subclass, however council feels on the residential side, however they want to make those subclasses. As you see, we have a subclass for vacant residential right now, right? So, you know, there's nothing stopping people who have vacant residential properties from coming into council saying, I don't like the, I don't like the mill rate for the, you know, vacant residential subclass and it should be the same as, you know, any other residential subclass.
I just wanted to suggest that I think too, there were some unintended consequence that developed once the change occurred. I don't think any of us understood or, I shouldn't say that. I know I myself didn't understand that by changing, like we did last year, we took away some farm exemption processes that allowed some of the landowners to have an exemption. Some of that was significant in dollars, I mean, big dollars. And the argument of, of downloading it on to the rest of the residents, I support wholeheartedly if it was significant, if we're talking a dollar and 10 cents a month. Yes, for some that is going to be significant, no argument there. I just wonder what it is that council in particular thinks their taxes go towards and how that plays out for the annexed people. So what do we get for our taxes that they don't get for theirs? An argument could be made for, for road clearing. Most of those roads are through, uh, roads that have to be maintained anyway, the town has to do that. Some of them are looked after by highways, we don't do anything with them. No curbs, no gutters, no streetlights. There isn't even a easy way to get to the downtown core other than by vehicle to do grocery shopping or, or go for supper or something like that. So we do have this inequality that exists because of it and I don't know how much of that inequality was actually intended when everything was first put together or thought of for that matter. And for us, for a large amount of money, like if we were talking a hundred dollars a year, yeah, I start to really squirm at that, but if I'm talking a dollar a month for equity, that maybe sounds closer to norm. I don't know. Just my thoughts.
I think if, if you're, if you're only saying a dollar or two, then you add our tax rate when we, when we put taxes up four or five percent, you add that on to there and a lot of people, that's a lot of money, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
So we can look at it either way, you know, I agree at dollar or two, whatever a month, sure is not a lot to some, but some it is. You have your tax rate on there, four or five percent, there's whatever, whatever you're up to for, for the month. So either way, I guess.
Anything else from council? Good discussion.
I just have one question. I was processing this and possibly having the information from last year, what they paid on their taxes as farmland from Sturgeon County or the one before they were annexed.
I can absolutely have that information. It might have to be in closed session for May 6th, but it was for some properties, if I'm recalling correctly, in some cases it was almost double.
And that's what I was wondering, because I looked at 2024 and it says it was two and a half percent almost. I don't know what their categories are. So, so really, if we look at, at it, we could possibly still be charging them less in taxes. I know some of their taxes doubled depending on what was going on, but it's all depend how they're classed.
Well, in, in preparing these options, I was trying to find a balance between the rates that they would have seen at Sturgeon, not necessarily as a baseline, because they are within the town limits now, so I wanted to focus more on our rates, but just like a more equitable approach to setting their rates and just building on what you said, Mayor McCray, in terms of the services with these annexed properties versus the non-annexed. And so you guys would have a comprehensive list of options that you could mull over.
I think this is just a lot of information because it was a little confusing when I was reading it and you explained it to us, it made a little bit more sense, but I, I do want to look at this a little bit more because equitable thing is a big word right now.
Yeah.
And we have to realize, like Mayor McCray had said, that they don't have the facilities, they use our facilities, but they don't have the infrastructure that we have within our town. Sewer, the water, you know, they got wild water, you know, they don't, some, they do have garbage pickup. Yeah. On the one side of town they do. Going straight from.
Don't believe any of the annexed properties have garbage.
North of the hospital.
If I'm not mistaken.
For clarification, garbage pickup isn't on your taxes, that's on a utility bill.
I know, but somebody was asking me about that, that's why I just wanted to put it out there.
Go ahead, Councilor Spicer.
I've got a couple of things. One on the other is gas and water, we actually pay for them separately as well on our utilities and so if you don't have, you're paying for them one way or the other, so that's not really part of the tax base that you're paying for. Those, there's still some money going into that.
I think, I think the argument is our utilities are not totally self-sufficient. They, they rely on, right now they rely on, on taxation to support that.
Infrastructure deficit.
They were, they were like, again, those utilities require some, some tax investment for the renewal, right? But I maybe shouldn't say this, but there wouldn't have been any tax dollars put into, putting it in the ground in the, you know, in the initials, in the first place, the initial development.
Couple of questions, like we have a farmland category now? My question is what was lost to these farmers on their farmland that they weren't able to, was missing for them? Are we able to give that back to them?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so there's an exemption that we don't, that municipal government act doesn't allow urban municipalities to have, it's only in rural municipalities.
We can't designate it.
So the way we'd have to do that, we'd have to do that through a subclass as well and gray area on this as to whether you're creating a residential subclass or whether you're creating a subclass in your farmland. So it's one of the reasons why we didn't go down that road because if you want to talk about a challenge, that's, that would be the, the quick way to challenge it and we might be, I don't want to be the first test case in the courts about, you know, is that a, is that a farmland classification or is that truly a residential classification? Because you're giving the reduction based on the farmland, not like, you're giving a residential credit, I guess. Probably not the right word. It's based on farmland, so have you created a subclass in your farmland or created a subclass in your, in your residential? This was the clean way for us to go so that, you know, the bylaw, again, from my perspective, yeah, anything can be challenged, but I think our footing, using the residential subclass, quite frankly, from my perspective is rock solid doing.
Best chance of a lawyer or a minister having us.
Yep.
Any, any other comments from council? The motion that's on the floor is no changes to the current subclasses as presented in option one. Anything else? Not seeing anything? Anything from administration? I think it's been a great discussion, I'll, I'll call that question, all in favor? Any opposition? That motion's carried. Good discussion. We now have 8.2, which was added to the agenda. It's a good assumption. So 8.2 is potholes on 54th Avenue. I think, Councilor Melnick, you wanted to bring that forward to council's attention and.
Yeah, yeah, I think everybody got a copy of, of the email that was sent to me and some pictures and I took a drive down and had a look and a couple of them are. And I took a drive down and had a look and a couple of them are pretty big, especially at the end of the driveway of their house there. Uh, it's a pretty big, deep pothole. And I told them I'd bring it to the attention and see if we could, you know, and darn it, guys are out and around. Whenever we sweep the roads, I guess, and everything, you know, patch it up for them and I'd bring it up and.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, yeah, so I did have a couple of conversations with, uh, with residents. And, uh, I did, I did allude to the fact that I'd like to wait till we sweep the roads before I drop the pothole patch in there. Obviously, we get a little bit of drying up needed. Um, outside of that, um, our, uh, our patch material just arrived on Thursday of last week, right before the weekend. So, um, we haven't had an opportunity regardless. But, um, but at the end of the day, yeah, there's not an issue as soon as we can. We would have liked to have got the sweeping done a little bit further, uh, sorry, a little bit sooner. But, uh, that was the best, uh, we could do for timing this year. But, uh, it's, it's, uh, ahead of where it was last year, which is great. But, um, the, uh, I like to get it swept up before I, I do anything, make sure that base so it sticks, right? Not that, uh, if you look at that picture, not that there's much of a base there to stick to, but, um, but yeah, to, and to answer any questions in relation to milling, um, if you have a look at the picture, I think you'll see that we couldn't do a fifty mil mill on that, even if we wanted to. And that road needs a, uh, a substantial overhaul, which, uh, which I think we've discussed a number of times, uh, previously as well. But, uh, but absolutely, we will, uh, have our crew, crew out there and, uh, and get some.
Few of them.
Mached up, yeah. Yeah, it was alluded to when I had the conversation as well, so, yeah. I appreciate it though.
Yeah, thanks.
Just while we have the opportunity, uh, in, in public, can you tell us what some of the criterias are you need to look at?
Yeah.
For the process of attacking potholes? Because everybody just thinks it's throw some stuff in and we're good to go. And I know there's more to it than that.
Absolutely, there is. So, um, when, when you're coming at a, at a pothole, generally speaking, you, you want dry conditions? Because you want to be able to blow all the dirt and debris out of there. Um, if you can, if it's all, uh, blacktop asphalt, it's, it's even better. Because at the end of the day, you take a tiger torch, you heat it up. And then when you put your asphalt in there, it glues. So you get that bondage, uh, between the mastic and the asphalt. On this one, you'll, you can see that's not going to happen. But what we do want it to do is at least be dry and some, and get some of the, uh, material out of there. So we can try and do as good a bond as we can on the edges where it might actually stick. We know it's going to come back out. It probably won't last a terrible long amount of time, um, given that under there doesn't look like, uh, either gravel or clay. But, um, which means it's going to move pretty quick as soon as it gets wet, unfortunately. But, um, but absolutely, we'll give it a shot. We just want to get that little bit of heat so we can try and get some bond between the, the patching material and the surface. And that's, uh, that's pretty much what we look for. Technically, you can break away some of the edges to clean them up and, and try and, uh, um, reveal some of that, uh, newer surface or untouched surface, so you can get that really good bond. But, uh, yeah, limited amount of time and limited amount of resources, but, um, but absolutely, we'll have them out there having a look at it for sure. Yeah.
I believe in your report today, there's an anticipated date for the street sweeping?
Yeah, twenty-six.
Of this month?
Yeah.
So we're a couple of days away yet, uh, before we see the sweepers out there.
Hundred percent. And weather, weather permitting, we'll, we'll absolutely be on top of it. So the material is, uh, has arrived, as I just alluded to, and, uh, we will have the guys down about pretty sure.
Just one more step in the, in the puzzle. Uh, I've got a pothole in front of my house. What do I do to help the town realize it and work on it? What's appropriate?
You can do what, what, uh, any of the residents right now have been doing, but sending a service request is the quickest way to get it through to us. Um, I'm not always by my office phone and I'm, and I'm not always in a position to answer my cell phone. But, um, absolutely send through a service request and we'll get, get the guys on it. That's absolutely our quickest method.
Anything else on eight point two?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment, and Mr. Davison has alluded to it. The pictures are worth probably seven hundred and fifty thousand worth. And, uh, so that, that road, as council's aware, it's, it's, it's on our plan. I think the difficulty with this one is, it, again, it's not an overlay. It's, it's a, you know, all of our information at this point in time tells us it's a rather substantial deal of, of a certain depth of even the subgrade. I use seven hundred and fifty thousand because I think that's the low end of the estimate. I think when you go down that road, we could be into a million dollars to, to redo that, uh, really quickly. And so we're going to have to figure out not just the timing of that. It may have to be done in two separate, you know, sections, um, just to make the dollars work. But we're going to have to fund it as well. And it's, it's not going to be a cheap one.
Yeah, just, just to add to that, if, uh, if council were willing at some point, we can bring this forward. I, I wouldn't be, um, I certainly wouldn't be averse to doing a couple of bore holes in that road and having a really good look at how it looks underneath. We don't know what depth the sub, uh, subgrade is at. We don't know how waterlogged it is, uh, given by the condition of the road, the amount of alligator cracking. And you see all the shifts in the road, it's constantly moving. Add to that, that, um, you know, I obviously wasn't around when this was built, but, um, but it's hard to say what was under it, when they, when they laid it and when they packed it. And, you know, there could be organics there, there could be any number of things. So my, my suggestion would be to do bore holes on that road.
Where you patch it?
Where are we at on sewer and water and gas on that road too? We have to kind of tie that into that. And then, then now your bill is a little more than a million dollars as well. The other thing about that road was there was, what, two houses on it for, three houses on it for like twenty years? Twenty-five years? And so that road really didn't get used a whole lot? And now there's, it's practically full. So I don't know if that had a, played a part in it too, but.
Hard to say for sure, yeah.
I think one of the other problems associated to it is when that development was put together and put down on, uh, on paper and what have you, uh, the north alley was never constructed. So half of that street has no back access. The other half, the south half of the, the avenue does. So now you've got everybody that's got a trailer, a boat, a quad thing and whatever, uh, up and down the, the front street. And, uh, like you said, it sat for so long with nothing happening that, uh, it got broken up in hurry.
Well, so many of those houses, when they came in too, now the water's being pushed somewhere. It's no longer coming up where that house is now. So how much of that's caused more infiltration into that road?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a ton of factors and the, the alligator cracking, cracking for sure isn't helping because it's letting all the moisture get straight into that subgrade. But, or I, I can say that we absolutely feel their pain. We are one hun, well, we're a thousand percent aware of it. And, um, unfortunately, we're also aware of the cost. But, but as I said, if we do more holes, I think we'll at least have something definite to, to start quoting off. And that's maybe something we should, uh, bring forward at some point very shortly.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to make the comment, because Councilor Spicer brought up an absolutely great point. And that is, you have water and sewer that is also on our, on our list. So we certainly don't want to rebuild a road in two thousand and twenty-six or twenty-seven. To go back in two thousand and twenty-nine or thirty to, um, you know, take a strip out of the middle of it so that we can get at our, uh, our, uh, water and sewer. Like, that just doesn't make any sense. So, um, but as we said, when we put that plan together, there will be adjustments as we go as to what the sequence of sequencing of this is. And some of that is going to be, you know, whether we like it or not, it's going to be based on, you know, do we absolutely have to do the road right now? Because if you absolutely have to do the road, then you got a, a project, a, a year or two. And it's quote, not ideal, but it is, it is how we're going to have to manage the projects with the resources that we have.
Must be a nightmare for the fellows, uh, snow clearing in that area. Because everybody's parked on both sides of the road and, and, uh, the ups and downs on that.
Not clip the road.
To, to their, um, you know, to, to sing their praise a little bit, the residents are really good about it. But, um, but it could certainly be a little bad. The, the main issue we have in that area is the curb, um, the mats. Yeah, so we, we clip a few of those every now and then, and the blower doesn't like them too much either. But, uh, but at the end of the day, it, uh, you know, it's a, it's a tough spot to be in. And as we said, our plan is somewhat fluid. So, you know, if we need to change something around, um, and when I say boring, I'm obviously alluding to coring.
Coring.
But, um, but yeah, so that's, uh, that's something that.
And, and just on that piece, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have, we're going to have to do some of that work, um, to do the pre-engineering for the live station. So there might be an opportunity just for us to.
Punch two extra holes.
Over here. While you're in town.
Yeah.
Walk over here and.
Live station might go here and throw a couple of holes for us.
As long as they don't cora line, I think we'll be happy.
Anything else then on this? Does that cover everything off, Councilor Melnick?
Thank you.
Super. Thanks very much. Eight point one, admin briefings. We've got, uh, Ms. Lane is, uh, next on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I feel like it's a long time coming. Great discussions earlier for sure. Uh, just to highlight a few things, uh, in my report, uh, which is from March twenty-sixth to April twenty-second. Uh, some new initiatives are the business visitation program. Mayor McCray and I have already started these business visits. And, uh, I think we're gaining some very valuable feedback from our business establishments downtown. And we've got a lot more to go, so, so watch for us coming. I'm doing some research into gap analysis and ECDV strategic plan. And I'm also completing this year's, uh, twenty twenty-five invest in red water portfolio. I'm hoping to have that done here shortly so that I can go to print for that. And, uh, we have a couple of grand openings, Dairy Queen, as well as Candy Pops. We'll be moving forward to council here shortly with a few land use bylaw amendments. MPC member recruitment, we are now looking at requiring two MPC members. So we're going to be, uh, going around and, uh, asking anybody within the community if they want to be a business, uh, sorry, an MPC member. The twenty twenty-five Business Social, June eleventh, it's a barbecue out at Devonian Park from eleven to four. And, uh, other than that, just some, uh, stats for you. Business licenses year to date, we're at ninety-four. Development proposals, uh, we have one confidential one. Development permits permitted and discretionary, year to date, we are at six. Uh, final occupancy permits, pleased to announce that we've now issued twelve of those. Uh, that was a, that was a new initiative too, that we had, I think it was last month that we started that. And, or the month before. Reimagine Redwater Grant Program, we're still sitting at one. We have garnered some interest as far as, uh, when Mayor McCray and I were out in the business community, uh, people that were, um, just learning of it, that are excited about it. Uh, I've received some email inquiries since then as well, but, uh, we're still waiting for formal applications to come in. And that concludes my report.
Anything from council through to Ms. Lane?
I have one question. I see you had the AGM on here for the team.
Yes, it was postponed.
So you were aware of that?
Yes. Yes, I had a note to comment on that, yeah. So April seventeenth, Redwater Chamber, uh, Annual General Meeting was postponed to May.
Go ahead and, uh, Councilor Spicer.
Will we be getting an invite to those grand openings?
That has been left up to the developer. I understand Candy Pops opened up over the weekend. Dairy Queen's opening is in May, I think. But, yeah, I, I know that I've extended it out to them to let us know when that grand opening is.
It'd just be nice to get, yeah.
Sure.
Ms. Lane has, uh, provided a small gift package for each of those new businesses that I've delivered. But it hasn't been an official opening or anything like that. It's just a presentation.
Soft opening, they call it.
And the soft ice cream is good.
What's awesome?
Thank you very much. Operations briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, almost caught me napping there. No, I didn't see my, uh, my position on the list. I actually thought it was Allegra. Talks some more finance stuff to you. So we'll go on to the project updates. Uh, the sidewalk program RFQ is closed, um, with O'Hanlon, uh, again, uh, being our best bid. No tentative, uh, date for work to begin yet. I'm hoping to, uh, chase that up, uh, this week or early next week to get a, uh, definitive there so we can get started on that as soon as possible. The STIP grant in relation to the bridge rehab, uh, we're expecting the tender document for review this week. It, uh, I didn't get it, um, when I wrote this. I haven't got it yet and, uh, I will follow them up this week. Again, it's, uh, but I have got some notifications from, uh, NAV Waters. And, uh, and so there's some permits going through the process right now and some, uh, final little pieces being, uh, corrected. One of which was, uh, their pricing changed for the permit. So we had to say we're okay to pay a couple hundred bucks more for the permit. So little things, twenty twenty-five it is, and everyone wants a couple of extra dollars. In relation to quotes for the reservoir building, uh, pump replacement, which is, uh, obviously a generator. We've, uh, we've got a winning bid on that. It came in a little lower than expected, which is fantastic, because, uh, when you involve electrical, um, that little bit extra can be eaten up really, really quickly. So, uh, we'll see.
Garnet, can you just kind of give an overview of that, the project and what?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we're, uh, what we're looking to do is our old, uh, engine-driven pumps in the reservoir. We've got two old Ford motors sitting in there. We are going to, uh, put something more reliable in, which is a generator. The generator will be external to the reservoir. And, uh, that generator is going to be cladded in sound deadening, uh, material and fenced. I do have the DB ratings, if anyone's curious, um, please reach out. It is below our, um, it is below eighty-two, which is fantastic. So it, uh, definitely shouldn't bother anyone too much. It includes a transfer switch, so obviously, uh, if our power goes down and our electric motors stop running, then we can flick the power over and, uh, off we are running. The generator is diesel, um, not natural gas. And, uh, we're also doing a replacement of two variable frequency drives, VFDs, in the building as well, just to give us that ability to, uh, adjust the, the running of the pumps, which we previously haven't been able to do other than choking back valves, which, um, which will help us out a whole lot. It, it'll make operation a whole lot, uh, nicer and it, and it makes it more reliable, as, as council's probably aware. Um, I think it's been discussed a few times, even, uh, before I was in this role, that, uh, the engines in that, uh, reservoir were not very reliable. They're all carbureted jobbies with points and, uh, we all know how much fun they are to play around with. So, yeah.
And again, just to emphasize, they're only for when emergency, when everything goes down. So it's not like they're going to be running all time and.
Absolutely.
They're going to be upset.
No. So what we'll do is we'll probably test them twice a year, just to make sure. We'll throw the switch and, uh, let the generator take on the load and make sure that everything's functioning the way it should. But outside of that, it would only be in the event of, let's say, we had a, uh, you know, a massive outage in power and we need to have our supply going, or there's a fire or something that's brought down power. But in that, in that, uh, if it got that serious, we'd likely be evacuating. But, but yeah, so that's the two main circumstances. No further? Okay. Sixty-four Street overlay quoting has been completed. O'Hanlon, again, uh, are, are doing us a great service on their pricing, which is fantastic. We're waiting on a kickoff date for that one. But, uh, that will be going ahead and that will include everything from, uh, the corner of, uh, sixty-fifth Street to the corner down on fifty-three A Ave, um, down to there. And it will include the two humps that you see on that, uh, just on the turns there. Yeah, so we're going to take it out and I call it a whale tail, but we're going to take that piece out and, uh, mill that up and, uh, smooth that out as well. So, um, in reference to, uh, Downtown Gas Line Project, um, we're hoping to be underway tentatively right at the moment on twenty-eighth of April. So that's the piece, uh, behind the Pioneer Club, running in the back there between the back alley of the church, all the way down to the CIBC. And then it'll go, um, west across the road, just a little ways across the road. There'll be nine bell holes there in total. And, uh, and the, the guys are gearing up and ready for that. They've got parts coming in, so, uh, we should be good to go. And, uh, we'll see how that one kicks off for us. We may need to bring in a, uh, bypass trailer for, um, our, um, new donate place. They need to have their gas still running, so we'll, we'll likely have a bypass on, on. They need to have their gas still running, so we'll likely have a bypass on, on their line only, so. But looking forward to getting that one going and getting that one completed as well. The, the guys are, are all over it, which is great, and hopefully it's very smooth.
Judging by the markings in the alley, you could probably have a party there. It looks like. The galley is pretty convoluted with piping and what happened.
Yeah, it's a bit of a Christmas tree effect, for sure.
Does that tell us connection, cause you any grief in there, or is that all over it?
There's a pull box there, as you can see, just, just in behind the building. It may cause us a little bit of grief with the boring, but directional drilling there, but we'll see how we go. Not expecting it to cause us too much of an issue, but, but we'll be in contact with them regardless, because if we happen to nick it.
That's the whole town.
So I'll tell you right now, we won't be nicking it.
Just in case.
Just on the offside that someone else does. But yeah, we won't be nicking it. I, I expect that to go pretty smoothly, obviously, if I'm to be honest. As I said, the only, the only draw our gas trailer to, to ensure that one of our, one of our businesses has continuous flow there, so. Okay, moving on. Smart man hole cover has been delivered, and it's currently on at the lift station there, and we're gathering some data just to give it a test and see what, what it, it shows us in comparison to our equipment out there. And, and then we'll be able to start moving it around, having a look at some other areas in the town. CFEB grant equipment has been ordered, or a piece of it has been. The fixed furnishings have been ordered. We're still in a little bit of talks in relation to the seating, because of course, as I alluded to in relation to some of our permitting, pricing in twenty-twenty-five, everyone's putting this nice little double-starred piece on the bottom of their quotes. It says tariffs, and so we're, we're having a little bit of a look at some options there. I can say that we did have engineering firm out to conduct a site visit the other day to do our drawings, and they're gonna give us an estimate on, on the cost of their drawings, and I'm hoping to have that in my hand very quickly before we place another order, because I want to make sure that we can actually fit everything in that was supposed to be on that grant, and ensure that we're, we don't have to change too much. But, yeah, it's been a fun time in twenty-twenty-five so far. As, as I just alluded to earlier, the smart man hole cover has been complete and delivered, and no change to the rest of the completed list, but I expect some of this stuff to be ticked, ticked off here pretty quick. Onto bylaw. So bylaw advertising is completed. I'm sure you saw some of the advertisements out in the paper and, and other places. We just started the interview process today. Hope to have some news next week on, on where we're, what direction we're going there and, and who we've, who we've selected, and get that process on, on the roll at the moment, as well as, as another important piece. If, if you do receive messages, I, I do try to tell people that we don't have bylaw right now, so we're collating some, some issues, but we're unable to act on some of them right now, but we, we will have someone in the hot seat here pretty soon, and, and we'll be trying to look after that stuff, so. Onto public works. So we've had our millings delivered. We've had our gravel delivered. I'm gonna just go through some of the highlighted stuff, as I usually do. You saw all the maintenance items that were conducted. So the fencing, fencing was repaired, the red water swimming pool. We started on alley maintenance as they dry up. Of course, we had a little bit of rain, so we'll have to restart a couple of them, because there's a few soft spots here and there, but we're working our way through. Filling a low spot at the golf course parking lot, as, as you saw, some of you may have noticed, it sank a little bit over the winter period and then through the thaw, but, but it's a pretty quick fix. Speed sign on Highway forty-eight was having a couple of little issues, so disconnected power, reset, and seems to be up and running again. I've certainly noticed it coming into town. Assisted Pem and staff with ice removal, and they did a little bit of work to help out with the gas main project behind the Legion as well, which is great. They've conducted some on-job training on the new gas monitors that came in, which was one of our capital items. Outside of that, they helped out pressure wash the breezeway between overtime and the art society. It was getting a little bit grubby in there and not looking so, so great. So they got a bit of spray in there and a little bit of detergent, cleaned it up a little bit. I alluded to earlier, sweeping scheduled for twenty-sixth of April currently. It is a, it is a weekend, so we, we would like to encourage all residents to please, I, I know it's a weekend, but please have you be off the road if you can, and on your driveways or in your back alley or something, so the, the sweepers can get around and do as good a job as possible so we can make sure that we keep our, our drainage clean and free of too much litter and dirt and sand. One staff has started the wastewater entry level training, which is fantastic. Cross-training's always a big, big thing for us. We want to make sure we've got as many people as possible cross-trained, so we always have the ability to backfill if someone is off sick or on vacation. They dug out a portion of the Beaver Dam out, out North Coast Transfer Station. It's an ongoing piece. We may want to bring our. Yeah, trapper. For some reason, tracker was in my head. We may want to bring our trapper back out at some point during the summer here, and we'll go from there. And as I alluded to earlier as well, our pothole material has arrived just prior to Easter weekend, so it's here now, and we can start looking around to get some, some of those ones patched. Onto gas. We've got thirty-four gas meters changed out.
One second.
Sorry.
Good question. So you had the landscaping around sidewalks and walking trails. I've had somebody bring it up to me that their front yard was damaged by the sweeper and stuff like that. Is there a way we can try to get away from that happening?
Yeah, so technically, they should be staying on the sidewalk, but they, as a, as a snow, when, once you sweep, what happens is the snow accumulates in, and it gets to a point where you can't really get it to move. You've got nowhere for it to sweep if it gets deep enough. So it comes down to a little bit of a procedural change, but I've chatted with the guys already, and every time you get a snowfall, you start wide and make sure you give yourself lots of extra room, because as that snow accumulates, you won't have as far to push it, and then you can cope with it creeping in over the winter. So it's, it's definitely something we can change. It won't be as brutal in the coming season. But if someone has an issue with us, let it, let it know, and let us know, and we'll come out and put some black soil down and some seed and try and fix that up for them. But, but it will unfortunately, you will have a little bit of scouring, but, or scarring, but scarifying, I guess you would call it. But, but at the end of the day, we'll, we'll look at making a couple of, we're modifying as we, as, as the guys learn the equipment, they learn how it's happening, they're modifying, we'll modify the way they're doing it, just so that it won't be as harsh.
It's gonna happen once in a while, but if you can negate it as much as possible, because some people take some very good care of their lawns.
Absolutely, and I don't blame them for that at all. And I'm a lawn guy. I'm, I'm not a non-danny lawn guy, but I am a lawn guy. But, but I certainly understand it, so. Yeah, we'll go on, back, back to gas. Thirty-four gas meters changed out. One gas order call in April so far. I'm sure that's changed by now, but we're at time of writing this report. Onto water, twelve water meters replaced in March, nine meters replaced in April, month-to-date. That also may have changed slightly. The capital piece, E-two pump has arrived. This is, this is the pump, not the engines, so the pump that we pulled out last year has finally arrived, and we'll be putting that back in, and I will feel a whole lot more confident in our distribution capabilities. Yeah, yes, the one we pulled out of the roof of the reservoir, yeah. So it has finally arrived, and that took a long time. Wastewater, three sewer backup calls in March, three CCTV inspections. I, I cannot speak to this camera enough. It definitely helps us out. It's great to get in to have a look at some of these sewer lines and see if exactly what the issue is. And, and then we can give residents the proper feedback and, and make sure that we can see everything that's happening in there. Outside of that, two sewer backups in April and thirteen year-to-date. And our airs and blower, which is for our municipal lagoons out at the Public Workshop, has, has arrived, and we're waiting to get that installed and commissioned as well. So little by little, we jam through some of these projects, larger projects, and, and getting there at a pretty decent state pace at the moment. As we all know, the provincials were here at Pembina Place. There was lots of compliments on the, compliments on the cleanliness of the building and the quality of the ice. Surprisingly enough, we had, we had people comment on the heat in the stands. And they, they made the comment that if they had that much heat in the stands in their arena, their, their ice would be melted. So I think that's a pretty good testament to, to the guys there, how they look after the surface and, and the way it's set up. But, you know, you can jam a lot of heat into that, into that building and still have a very solid ice surface, so. Moving on, on April eighth, Jeremy Didi and Charity took part in the toxic train emergency exercise in Morrenville with Shrem, which is fantastic. It's always great. Jeremy, if I haven't mentioned before, I think I may have, has completed his logistics officer training and his ICS three hundred, so he's, he's right up there on the, on the chain as far as emergency response goes, which is fantastic. On April ninth, Startech Refrigeration came out and completed the shutdown, so that was the day we shut down the ice and, and we started to remove it from that period fort, and on the next point, the ice has been removed. Rain barrels have picked up at Sturgeon County Office in Morrenville for the annual rain barrel program. And you'll see the numbers on that further on in my report. Jeremy and Darren attended the AARFP, which is the Alberta Association of Recreation Facility Personnel, which is quite the mouthful, and in Camwell, and they, they attended a whole bunch of topics, including grant writing, energy efficiency, automation, ball diamond maintenance, and an acrobics forum. Jeremy came back with a whole lot of ideas, and I did a whole lot of notice. But at the end of the day, he came back with a whole lot of ideas and, and brought back some good information, which is fantastic. The more they attend some of this stuff, the more they learn, and the more they network with some other people and pick up some ideas and some, some different ways of doing things. Operators are making lists of what we'd like to accomplish over the summer with our summer students, as well as themselves, and they're making lists for parts and equipment, and making sure we're ready to go. I won't mention the new barbecue, but there is a new barbecue, which they're quite proud of. I haven't yet used it, but I'm sure it's a good one. Portural Center QSD, custom manufacturing, excuse me, replaced the freight cable on the stage curtains, which is fantastic. We're up and running there again. Moving on to the campground. Obviously, we've got the porta-potties on standby. We're looking at our picnic table refurbishments this, this year, and we're gonna refurbish those with composite cords, which will last a lot longer, and we won't have the rotting issues or any of those things we've got going on currently. So, and we don't have to paint them, which reduces our time for the guys, so. Onto parks and beautification. I'm sure everyone has seen our little friends poking their heads up over there. They're back, and we are, we are going to try and switch our, our plan of attack this year. We're going to, we're hooked up with a new company, a different company to what we used last year. We will keep looking and be searching until we find something else that works. Obviously, we're, for anyone listening, we are not allowed to bait anymore, which was super, super effective, but we cannot do it. And so at the moment, we are searching around for a better solution than what we had last year, because last year we foamed the holes with a liquid that was, that was, should have shut them down. As we can clearly see this year, so we're, we're looking at some options, and I'll, I'll happily tell Council about it once we, once we get going over there.
Go ahead, Counselor Butcher.
So what about the little critters that cross the road into the residential area?
Yeah.
Is there any help for the residents?
Are you talking about the fast gas section there, Counselor Butcher? Are you talking about the fast gas?
Crossing it into the residential.
At the rails of the residential.
Oh, yeah, we've got a couple in our yard.
Really?
Off the highway.
What? So we, I actually didn't see those. I will certainly do some talking and a little bit of research. We did do the fast gas side last year, just, and we did do the site on the other side. It did not work. Hopefully, yeah, there, it's brutal. You know, I, I'd love to be able to switch that back to bait, but as I said before, we can't, so we're, we'll, we'll try, but I'll, I'll send them over and we'll have a look.
It is on your boulevard. There are tunnel, four tunnels already around our tree.
Yeah, I, I hear, and you take care of that boulevard, right? Joking.
But they're not wanted.
Yeah, absolutely. I, yeah, so I'll, I'll send the boys. We'll have a quick look, and if they've migrated over there, and I'll definitely take your word for it, that we'll have some, we'll have the boys go and check it out.
Going around, they're in my backyard.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping this doesn't become a much larger issue, but, but yeah. So I'll, I'll have the boys drop by and have a look, and we'll see if we can sort that out. And if anyone else has got them, that is close to the, to Devonian, please send us through a note. Let's see what we can do. Onto, carrying on with parks and beautification, twenty-two hanging baskets were picked up from Erdman's Gardens again. They've, they've been fantastic for us every year. And preseason in parks inspections, which is where we picked up our little friends, are going on with us looking to, to secure some plans for future parks. Onto the pool. So interviews have been done for the manager and guard positions. We're full, full lock, stock, and barrel there. We're looking good for this year. We've got a good manager. Looks like we've got a good assistant manager, and we've got a lot of returning guards, which is fantastic for us, because they bring that experience every year. They get better. They move from juniors to seniors, and, and hopefully, you know, we might even have some of them move into management positions as others move on. So that's always good to see. Onto the fire hall. We have another roof leak.
Different spot?
Yeah, so as we know, we spent a significant amount of money that has resulted in a couple of leaks. And I have, I pulled the consultant out last year. He didn't like the look of it. He contacted the roofing company. The roofing company came out, said they fixed it, and we're back at square one again, only we're at a point now where they're not answering my phone calls. So they're not too happy with me, and I'm not too happy with them. And we will endeavor to get someone on the roof this year and see if we can't find something. My thought is that it's slipping into the seams between the two roofs, and it's traveling inside the building, and then just finding an exit where it's coming down. So it's a two different building roof, or two different roof, building. But we will be investigating that again this year. Onto community services. A pickleball winner session wrapping up and moving to the fieldhouse. Volunteer tax program. I mean, this is a great program. Fifty-two intakes up till this report was written. I haven't got the final number, but it's probably very close to fifty-two, but I mean, that's still a fantastic number to, to get through. And we, we'd certainly like to thank our volunteer who puts in a lot of work getting that program done and, and helping us out, which is fantastic. Onto upcoming events. We have volunteer appreciation coming up on April thirtieth, which I'm told is going to be a pretty, pretty great event. Townwide cleanup is to be determined. We're also, while I'm speaking about town, townwide cleanup, I have been in contact with the library, who's looking to time their electrics roundup at the same time we do our, our Big Bin event. So we're looking to time those events out at the same time this year, which will benefit both, so. And we won't need to run stuff back and forth, which is fantastic. Grand sponsorship and other. We received volunteer Alberta grant for volunteer appreciation again this year, which is great. And I'll move on to talking about some of the, the facility rentals. So as you can see, the arena ice surface came out on the ninth. We only had the Paint the Ice event on April second. So just a single event there. The lobby, we had five bookings, so the crafter group and our minor ball association. We rented the lobby out to have a, have some meetings and do their crafting. Onto the Bank of Home Cultural Center. As you can see, it's, it's been pretty busy with twenty-one, twenty-one separate rentals there, which is great for us. It's always busy. We're coming into wedding season, so hopefully we'll pack that full for the, for the season and see how, how we go revenue-wise. Moving on to the Cultural Center Kitchen. Had four bookings in there, and they're all, for the most part, Mr. Mayor-related to your event, and it was a great breakfast and a, and a great event. I know a lot of people enjoyed it, that's for sure. Onto the curling ice, two, two bookings there for the Redwater Curling Club and their bonspiel. And that is the end of my report. Thank you all.
Anything for Mr. Davison?
Anything for Mr. Davidson? Go ahead, Council Butcher.
1500 Easter eggs, where did you find them all? Where the mall?
I, I hear there's a couple of hundreds still out there, no.
That was a phenol, I read that and it was just phenomenal to see and to even try and comprehend how they hid all those Easter eggs.
You know what, the, the ladies over there are really digging in their heels and they're doing a fantastic job.
Yes, they are.
I am looking forward to seeing some really good programs this year for summer programs. I'm looking forward to seeing some of the events that they put on. You know, the, there's a lot of enthusiasm over there and there's, there's a lot of things going on. The, that was a new event, obviously. I don't think it quite hit the numbers we, we were anticipating, but regardless, it was still a great event. People enjoyed it and, and the kids for sure enjoyed it, so.
Yeah, appreciate it. Kudos to them.
Absolutely, thank you.
I don't think Counselor Melick's going to jump out on this one, but I will. We were both in attendance for the Easter egg hunt. And it was an absolute gobsmacked, wonderful opportunity to meet with people and see the young ones. And you're asking about the 1500 Easter eggs. They had them scattered all over the place. They were the little plastic eggs and they had some with candy and some with special stuff. And they had some gold eggs for, for special prizing and, and stuff like that. And there had to have been 80?
I'd say, we were the hot dog guys.
We were hot, we were the hot dogs. There was 80 to 100 kids there. Turned the, turned the, the crowd loose and they just ran like heck from one end of the school's grounds to the other. They had a, a small area set off the side for the little ones, three and under or something like that, were all in their own special area. Hot dogs, we went through 10 dozen or more, I'm guessing. People were happy, they were showing up with strollers, they were walking, they were driving. I, I can't say enough about it, for a first event, they did an absolute excellent job putting that together, so kudos to your team.
Absolutely, I'll pass it on, Mr. Mayor. I, as I said, I thought it was a fantastic event and, and well thought out and the girls planned it out really, really well, so.
I think so. And the only other question I have for you is, on your report, you talk about the, we called them frost boils at one point in time in the golf course parking lot and, and the sinkage that's there. At one point in time, we had a problem with the manhole between 51st and 54th. I'm wondering if there isn't a chance we might have some, some water seepage there taking subsoil away or whatever.
I, I think that you're talking about the drainage system or?
Yeah, the, the.
I thought that had been lined, but I could be, I thought it was lined a couple of years ago.
The catch basin right in the middle of the intersection and it, it gave way. I'm going back 10 years or so. And plugged up with rocks and stuff coming right into the system and they, it was repaired. But I'm just wondering if, if some of that concern in the parking lot is, is actually coming from underground.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's entirely possible. I can have the boys have a look and see if we're getting any ingress there.
New section of pipe in, in behind number nine into that catch basin. But I just thought I would throw that out as, as something to watch or.
Yeah, I just seem to remember them lining that, lining it, there was before my mind was decision, but, but certainly check it and it'd be worth a look for sure.
Anything else for Mr. Davidson? Thank you for a good report.
Thank you, sir.
Corporate Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So with assessment taxation, we saw a slight decrease in some of our arrears over 2024 and 2023, which is really great to see. We're slowly chipping away at that. We had the tax notifications filed at the end of last month, end of March. So those notifications, those properties will be up for auction in 2026 if they remain unpaid. The three new tax agreements were entered, entered into this month following the motion to approve the agreements during the April 1st council meeting. So administration's going to go through the remaining properties placed in notification first in 2024 and then in 2025 to see if we can get some more agreements in place to bring to council over the next four to six weeks. We had Mike from Townmark Consulting go over the assessment presentation for the upcoming year. So I've just highlighted some of his points there for your reference. Then we worked through the calculation of options for the upcoming 2025 tax rate bylaw, which we reviewed earlier this evening. Onto utilities, so we did see an increase in utility arrears in April compared to March. We do suspect that as the temperatures warm up and with the removal of the carbon tax levy, I suspect a lot of residents will be catching up. So we're, we're optimistic that that balance will start trending down. And again, as I, as I alluded to, so on March 15th, 2025, government Canada announced that it would be removing the federal fuel charge, the carbon levy. So really great news for residents. So the effective date was April 1st. So this will be reflected on the April billing that residents will receive no later than May 10th. So in addition to the removal of the carbon levy, April billing will also see the removal of that $3 a month recycling charge. So it's a really great month for residents in April with those reductions in their bills. So some banking account balances as of April 17th. The March financial statements and the quarter one budget to actual analysis will follow during the May 6th council meeting. Priority this, this last week was just getting those tax options ready for you guys. Audit updates, as you know, the December 31st, 2024 audit of financial statements were passed on April 15th. We're the final stages of the LAPP audit with a deadline of May 31st. So emergency management, who along? I also attended the S RAP exercise with Matt on April 7th and 8th in Morrenville, it was really great, talks of train derailment and given, so. Excellent exercise put on by Caitlin, the S, or the Sturgeon County's Regional Emergency Management Coordinator for. Great to see how the departments work together. Excellent, excellent training exercise. So again, we're hosting the community meeting on Monday, Monday, August 25th. Moving on to IT, so our server has arrived. We're looking at scheduling a date at some point so we can get that updated. Again, we'll update any impacts to our systems if necessary. And yeah, just some things coming up, the completion of the LAPP audit, preparation of those quarter one financial statements and the budget to actual tax rate presentation during the May 6th meeting and then the preparation of the 2025 property tax notices. And that concludes my report.
Just wanted a quick second. In your, beginning of your report, we have the same outstanding amounts primarily for 2021, 2022 and 2023. 2021 is the one that concerns me the most, is that a singular property or is that multiples?
So it's multiples, but it's multiples of the same. If you'll recall during our conversations leading up to the audited financial presentation, there were those properties that were outstanding for a number of years that were reaching the assessed value and were included as part of the schedule of unadjusted differences. So that is the primary reason for the balance.
Yeah, it just seemed that they've been hanging about the same level for a couple of years, so. Thank you for that. And then council action report. That's yourself, Mr. Van Buehl?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things to note. I'm looking forward here, so the. Binding on the caboose, the no trespassing, we had them up and we had them down. So we are, we've ordered something that's more permanent for them, so they'll be in here shortly.
Motion sensors and caliper machine.
Again, we put something up temporary while we, we got something more permanent, they lasted a night?
Yeah, boy, yeah, they were gone pretty much the next day. We do have something else up, but it's still temporary. We've ordered signs and they're going to be affixed pretty solidly.
Their foreheads, I hope.
The Burferry Fund is the guiding principles for that. We'll be coming forward to the community services committee meeting on, I guess that'll be June. Yes, the only one you're not on. So that'll be in June. The rest of this is pretty much complete, other than the FCM conference registration. The council remuneration committee is dealing with that, well, so they'll, they'll make some recommendations and that will come back as one package for council to look at when they. Other than that, as soon as we have a, bylaw officer, we'll be working on the OHV changes, whatever we want to do there. Other than that, that's, everything else is pretty much self explanatory there, taking care of most of that.
Anything else for Mr. Van Buehl on the action reports? Thank you. Go ahead, Council Olson.
Motion to return.
I think we need one to accept briefings. Need a, a motion to accept your briefings, yes or no?
We normally do, yes.
Yes. Go ahead, Council Butcher.
I'll make a motion to accept briefings as presented.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing any call, that question, all in favor? Council Olson?
Motion to return.
Thank you, sir.